Good afternoon. And I am Menlo Park's mayor, Cecilia Taylor, and welcome to the city council's community funding grant subcommittee, January 29. At this time, I would like to introduce city council subcommittee members and stat present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, Executive Assistant to the City Manager Nicole Pasadas, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, Library and Community Services Supervisor Rhonda Powers, Interim Finance and Budget Manager Blaney Singh, Librarian Nora Mercer. Thank you all for being here. I will now turn it over to the Executive Assistant for the City Manager, Bonnae Passalis.
Hello, thank you. So at this time, under regular business, the commission considers recommendation from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require the committee's approval. The first regular business item is C1, Approval of the Minutes for January 30th, 2023, City Council Community Funding Grants Subcommittee Meeting. So are there any clarifying questions from the committee before we take public comment? No. Okay, so we will open public comment on item C1 for members of the public who wish to provide comment on C1 Subcommittee Minutes. If you are in person, please stand. If you are participating virtually, please engage in the hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. This is the final, okay, I have one guest, Ron Snow, who has his hand up for C1. I'll ask you to go ahead and give your public comment, please.
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just I'm glad that you're considering these funding opportunities. I just want to put in a plug for MPC Ready. It's a volunteer group that has already demonstrated a lot of grassroots work in bringing Menlo Park residents to a closer point of being prepared for disasters and has done considerable work in getting those neighbors to work with one another to build a stronger and more resilient community, and that's being done neighborhood by neighborhood. So I think there's an opportunity to provide funding for MPC Ready, and I appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, I do have another hand raised for public comment.
So this is Karen Ferguson calling in from Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. I'm not sure if I should be mentioning something now or wait until item C2. Yes, wait until item C2.
You can do that. Thank you. Okay. So this is a final call for public comment on item C1 Minutes from 2023's meeting. Okay, do we have a motion and second from the committee to approve the minutes from the January 30th, 2023 meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move forward to the next agenda item. That one is, the regular business item is C2, Review Staff Recommendations and Create City Council Community Funding Grant Subcommittee Recommendations for the 2023-24 Community Funding allocations. There is a mention that I'd like to bring up now. It was noticed today that an application was missed in the initial review process, and that application was from Communities Overcoming Relationship Abuse, AKA Cora, located in San Mateo. I am sharing the application for consideration at this time. We get some to the
Okay, we just sort of the permanent get into the list and I'm supportive, they just need to
I'm supportive. So we'll add them for consideration. And second question I have for folks is, please, Mayor Taylor and Vice Mayor Combs, please let me know if you have any current or recent affiliations with any of the applicant organizations.
Yes, I do. One is Job Train, and the other is SMC or So Many Choices Community Project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
I have no
Thank you. Okay, and any other clarifying questions from the committee before we take public comment? So let's move on to public comment. So we will open public comment on item C2. While public comments are welcomed and encouraged, please be advised that the subcommittee cannot accept any new information about the applications at this time. This is to ensure that all applications are treated equally on the merits of the respective applications. The deadline to submit information was on November 3rd, 2023. In fairness to all applicants, no new information can be considered after the deadline. So thank you for your comments. If anyone has a comment at this time, for members of the public who wish to provide a comment on item C2, Recommendations for the 23-24 Community Funding allocations. If you're in person, please stand. If you are participating virtually, please engage the hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. Okay. I do have one hand raised online with the phone number ending in 8821. I'd like to share your public comment at this time. Again, this is someone online on the phone number ending in 8821. Like to speak, go ahead now. Kevin Ferguson. I don't have it. It doesn't show a name. So they'd have to dinner.
Maybe sir, we'll watch him.
Yeah, we'll try again after. Okay, I'll go ahead with the next public comment from Cora. If you want to go ahead and speak now, I'm sure your public comment.
Hello, everybody. This is Karen Ferguson. So you are hearing me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. And so I know I am not that caller. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the subcommittee. We actually unusually put in two applications this time from Menlo Park, and that is because you have been an incredible support for our hotline services. And we know that there have been five homicides in San Mateo County in the past year, all of which were domestic violence related. This is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the total DV and intimate partner abuse has had on families, and we need to do everything in our power to give them the possible resources to move out of abuse. The primary portal for moving out of abuse in San Mateo County is through the Cora hotline. Additionally, when police are involved in an incident, the referral to Cora's Emergency Response Program ensures that people most at risk receive the help they need. However, our funding has been flatlined for quite a number of years in terms of state and county funding, and we are now facing VOCA cuts, Violence Victims of Crimes Act cuts, which would come to us federally. So it is really vital that we have all of the community support that we need in terms of our hotline and emergency response services. So that is to call out that application. We do have a second application that we also put in from Menlo Park, which is about the Speak Up Campaign, which came out of the brutal murder in San Carlos, a little over a year, year and a half ago now, where the community really wanted to find a way to respond to people who may be experiencing abuse and don't know how to reach out. So we created the Speak Up Campaign. We reached out to more than 280 community businesses in San Carlos. We did 60 presentations, and then we then shared that with the Council of Cities, and Menlo Park was one of the cities that was incredibly supportive of the idea of the Speak Up Campaign. To be a part of that campaign does require a $10,000 contribution from the city in order to help us fund the staff that come out and do the Speak Up presentations. So we do hope that you would take this time to consider both applications. If there needs to be a prioritization, we please ask you to prioritize the hotline because that is what is our vital service. But we really believe that it is a combination of both applications that are going to help San Mateo County as well as Menlo Park residents specifically to be able to reach out and receive the services they need when they are facing abuse within their own homes. And thank you so much for your consideration and for your hard work in all of these fundings. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Just kidding.
I can't seem to close it, but
Okay, so I'll go ahead and try again for the person attending online with the phone number ending in 8821, you can press star nine to provide your public comment. I'll go ahead and do a last call for public comment.
Hi, my name is Solis. I'm the News Editor of the Lonbessman Program for San Mateo County. I want to thank you for your ongoing support. We have an application in. The Lonbessman Program supports 419 facilities within San Mateo County, covers residents throughout the county. We provide support, advocacy, respond to elder abuse, and various other abuse claims within the county. We have RCFEs, boarding cares, continuing care, county communities, adult residential, and adult day healthcare. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and discuss and receive some committee recommendations for this year's funding. I did share with you, you all, the staff recommendations, which I'll put on the screen here. And we can go through those that may have additional comments.
So a clarifying question, and that is with Cora applying for two applications, and it's not included in the total. The $350,000, if they're asking just for one of their programs to be fully funded, do we just fund the one, or do we still consider both applications?
That's up to the subcommittee, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can have a total that's higher than what the staff recommendation. There, that's the direction.
I don't know how much higher. Because I'm just looking at the total of $350,000. I want to stay with that.
Yeah, okay. Disagreement.
Thank you. So just looking at a few of the awards that have a larger, let's say, budget, so Vice Mayor Combs, would you consider looking at maybe three of them and just shifting funding from them so that we can fund for it?
Yeah. Totally cool. I mean, I take a broader choice for building. So this is the, the staff organizations, I'm actually a part of the staff department.
Correct.
So this is the person you took the public seat, you see.
Yes.
And so what do you want to acknowledge, right, that the staff reviewed all applications and made decisions or recommendations to the subcommittee, which would make a recommendation to the council, face and read the applications. Would someone in staff be willing to, at a high level, just share what was the approach to the recommendations we ended up with, like, how did they look at them? Which is just as a sort of a transparency to the public.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And please, this is not intended to offend anyone in the spot.
No. We did meet in the end of December for recommendations. One of the, three of the categories that we use while we rate is completeness of the application eligibility based on the policy that's on our webpage, and then the impact to Menlo Park specifically. So there is a question on each application as far as how many people are served and how many are Menlo Park residents that are served. And so we look at those numbers mostly to see who has a bigger impact on Menlo Park along with the other two rating areas, and then we rate those individually. We come together and put the rates together, and then we go off of that. It depends.
Yeah. Okay, now, to Mary, can you take us through your
Thank you. I appreciate you asking that question. And then were all applicants considered and given funding, or what?
Correct. So our recommendation was to fund all applications. We did receive, so we received 40 applications, 41 now from Cora. Seven of them were new agencies that had not replied before, and then six of them were from agencies that didn't apply last year but had applied in the past. And the rest of them were all the, those that applied last year did apply again.
And then that information, and then the question that Vice Mayor Combs asked will be in the staff before we pick up to the city council.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So if we can go down the list, and thank you for your public comment and for your work, considering how much you apply for and the work that you do in exchange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very important. So if we go down the list, do you want me to make suggestions on ones to shift funding from?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to go that route, we can go line by line. But yeah, I think there were some maybe that we need to, well, we definitely need to find the five, some funding for the new applicant petition. So I think if we just start at the top, if there's anything that's out of ordinary, I went ahead and copied over the staff recommended amount to the city councils recommended amount, but those obviously, the numbers can be changed.
And I'm gonna, I know I actually recommended against this, but maybe we just could go more by line. So we officially said the name, and then if we, if there's one of us who has changes, let you say it, and not, and then we just go on. And I think for most, we don't have changes, but maybe that will be like even though I know it's
Works for me.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with ability paths. So they requested 5,000. They received three last year, and we recommended five for this year. Okay, all right, next one is Acknowledge Alliance. And so they requested 25 last year. They received 16,000, and we're recommending 16,000. All five, 13,000 is the recommendation. And I think it's Bay Area's The True Light Resources for All. We are recommending 1,000 as a new applicant.
And then just a question on that. How did you come on? Was that based on what their overall budget is?
I think several factors. We noted the budget along with the rating results.
So if they have mine next year, it's a potential that they could, that we would increase the amount?
Yes, that's okay. Then Beyond Barriers Athletic Foundation for 7,500 is what the staff recommended. Boys and Girls Club, they requested 15,000. Staff recommendation was 10,000. Community, okay, so here's two for community overcoming relationship abuse from Cora. So the first one that I have here listed is for the Speak Up Community Education Program. So this is this secondary request, the one that was omitted was their primary request, which is the hotline, and that was for crisis support service programs. And that one, they had also requested 10,000.
So Vice Mayor Combs, are you comfortable just funding, fully funding the hotline for the 10,000, and then not funding Speak Up?
That's the Russian word.
I'm just following the request of the
Okay. So we'll put Okay, next one is County of San Mateo, San Mateo Jobs for Youth. So they requested 4,000, and our recommendation was 4,000. East Palo Alto Tennis and Tutoring, they requested 15. Staff recommendation was for 8,000. Family Connections, recommended amount was 10,000, and staff recommended 8,000. Hip Housing, 15,000. Staff recommendation was for 12,000. Job Train, they recommend, they requested 10,000. We recommend 10,000. Junior League Palo Alto Mid Peninsula, they requested 64,000, and we requested, we recommend 7,500. Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, they requested 10,000. Staff recommends 8,000. Life Moves, recommended, requested amount was 2,000. Staff recommends 15,000. Live in Peace, requested amount was 20,000. Staff recommended 10,000. And Menlo Park Community Foundation, they requested 2,000. They received 3,000 last year, so staff recommended the 3,000 for this year. And MPC, Menlo Park Community Ready, requested 5,000, and we requested staff recommends 4,000. My New Red Shoes, they requested 1,000. Staff recommends 1,000. Nature Bloomers is a new applicant. They requested 9,000. Staff recommends 2,500. Mostra Casa de, East Palo Alto, requested 10,000. Staff went with that. We're pressed to recommend 10,000. Embudsman requested 3,000. Staff recommends 3,000. Omniware Networks requested 2,000. Staff recommended amount was 2,000. Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, requested amount was 25,000. Staff recommended 25,000. Peninsula Volunteers, they requested 40,000. Staff recommends 20,000. Ravenswood Classroom Partners, staff recommends, they requested 15,000, and staff recommends 15,000. Ravenswood Education Foundation requested 15,000. Staff recommends 7,000. Rebuilding Together Peninsula, they requested 10,000. Staff recommends 10,000. Reichs Center for Human Enhancement, they requested 20,000. We recommend 5,000. Samaritan House requested 27,500. Staff recommended 20,000. Service League of San Mateo County, they requested 3,000. Staff recommended 3,000. So Many Choices Community Project, requested amount was 138,500. We, as a new applicant, suggested and recommend 5,000. Star Vista requested 35,000, and staff recommends 25,000. Sustainable San Mateo County requested 5,000, and staff recommends 2,500. The Hood Squad requested 20,000. Staff recommends 5,000. The Joy Culture Foundation requested 20,000, and staff recommended 5,000. Upward Scholars requested 10,000. Staff recommended 5,000. Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired requested 15,000, and staff recommends 15,000. We Hope requested 20,000, and staff recommended 7,000. Youth Community Service requested 10,000, and staff recommended 10,000. And so with that, this year's budget is $350,000. There is option to request to allocate funds to 355 if you want to, or if there's any other changes. Okay. I want to, I think last year we did something like that. Those were the requests.
I'm just looking at a few of the awards, and because I still want to stay at the $350,000 mark, maybe shifting some funds to the larger ones. One of them is PCRC, Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center.
Okay. That one was for 25,000.
Start a lot. It's a 20? Yeah. Okay. And then Peninsula Volunteers. So maybe ship that to 15,000.
Okay, we're at the 315 now, too.
We already are?
Yes.
Okay, so
Is there some that you want to add to?
Yeah.
The altar is, yes, okay. So and it's a volunteer, you set to 15?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Samaritan House to 18.
Samaritan to 18,000.
And then Star Vista to either 20,000 or even 22,500.
Lonely too. Great, yeah. So Just tell me, Stan, thank you.
Well, I lost the chip with this, that's 3,500. Yeah.
Yes. 98.
So give 9,500. So, and I don't know what the dollar amount, but possibly give, and I'm just looking at folks that it's the only organization that provides the service.
Okay.
So We Hope is bumping them to 10,000. From seven to 10. And then Righty Center from five to eight. Those will be the only ones that I have.
So that leaves us at 346,530 as the
So, like, should we try to strive for the 350 or stay there?
Right. Try to spin that, make sure very driven. If you want to keep it in this. I saw in one case, we actually did provide work that was requested, right?
Correct. That one was for the Rotary Club of Menlo Park for the Community Garden, and that was due to practice from last year. We had also bumped, they had asked for 2,000, but we gave them 3,000. At the direction of the subcommittee, so we can do that again this year, or?
Yeah, that's fine, we're in.
Yeah.
And then in order not to set precedent, so just thinking about giving MPC Ready what they requested, but I know that number of 4,000 But I know that number to four thousand came up because of the percentage of the.
Correct. Part of the eligibility eligibility is not to exceed twenty percent of their operating budget and five thousand was at twenty. So we had recommended, the staff recommended four thousand to keep it under that eligibility requirement. But it is, you know, that's still the discretion of the subcommittee to give them the full. Five thousand if you want to.
Oh, wait, so. We, we gave them four thousand based on the budget, right?
Correct.
Based on at least guidance or direction that we've been public about.
Yes.
But we can override that.
Correct.
I would be hesitant to override it if that's like the kind of. Given in the service. I would go, so. Ombudsman, who has just come here, right, and made a public comment. They requested. Three thousand dollars. Since there is some precedent for giving people more than they requested. Would you be supportive of one of the four thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, we got their suggestion. So I'll just reach out to the staff, to the team that helped work on this. What do you suggest we do with the remaining funds? I always have bright ideas, but. We could give the remainder to the outlets now. At least I'm sure you all will accept it.
Absolutely. One in three are going to be seniors over the next few years. Seventy plus percent of seniors end up in a long-term care facility, short-term or long-term. So we have a community that they're covering for their citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So then, yeah, I had added that extra to Ombudsman. Does this look good, the final?
It's good to me.
Then. So do we have consent to move this forward? Yes, the subcommittee's recommendation. So the next step is this would be put into the staff report that we're scheduled for tentatively for the February thirteenth city council meeting. If there's no other. Comments, then I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.